Thank you, and welcome to the regularly scheduled Tuesday, December 5th, meeting of the Morro Bay Planning Commission. At this point, I notice that we have a full complement here, so I'll call the meeting to order. If you would join me in a moment of silence, please. Thank you. Now, we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance. Please face the flag and begin. So now's the time that we devote to public comment period. Pardon? Oh. Oh, I'm sorry. You're right, Scott. Let's skip by that one. Do we have any announcements from the planning commissioners? Richard? Jesse? Okay. Like I said.
(laughing).
So now's the time for the public comment period, and this is the time for the public to come forward and speak to any item that is not agendized for this meeting. Do we have anybody wishing to speak tonight? Okay. I wanted to bring up one item that I was contacted by a citizen about, definition of hedges. So Scott, do you want to...
Yeah, so our current ordinance doesn't have a definition for hedge in it, and so it is one of the things that we're rolling into the new zoning code update. In fact, there will be a definition of hedge in the development standards portion of the G-PAC, development standards portion of the zoning code update that the G-PAC's going to review on the 21st. So it'll be in this chamber, because the meeting starts at 4:00. So it will be in the development standards portion of the zoning code piece, and so we are incorporating into the zoning code moving forward, so we do have that, because it has proven to be an issue in the past.
Okay. Thank you, Scott. Richard?
Scott, I remember Dr. Teff had put some language together. Are you aware of that, where he said something about daylight below a certain...
He did work out. I do have the commentary that he had put together.
Okay.
We're using, I mean, I think where we're going right now is a little more traditional example of a hedge, and I think we're working in the new zoning code to come up with some exhibits and pictures of things, so you have good examples of what we're talking about. So we're going to have a lot more of that in the new code. I mean, we're still working on what those pictures and stuff are. We've developed a lot of the policy language in it, so, you know, moving forward, but we're still working on putting those exhibits that go along with it together. But that's the idea, is to have a lot more, you know, examples and pictures, and like, what constitutes a front lot line when you have a weird-shaped lot, you know, that type of thing. So we're getting exhibits and examples of all those types of things to put in there, too, so there's a written explanation, and then there's, you know, a picture of it, so you can kind of see what the ideas behind the policies, and so that should prove useful to the folks that use the zoning code.
That way.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Scott.
Sure.
We have no presentations, so moving on to the consent calendar, item A1. Do we have any comments? Joe? On consent calendar? Jesse?
No.
Richard? Michael? Okay. No comments? Any... Can I have a motion? Second?
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Item A1 passes. Next on the agenda is the public hearings, and we have item B1, case number UPO 496 and ADO-124. At this point, I'm going to relinquish my chair and my position to Michael and recuse myself from this item.
You should maybe tell them why.
I had previous conversations with the clients or with the applicant, so I think it's appropriate that I recuse myself from this item and let this item go forward without my input. Okay?
I have a question here approximately five minutes. I suppose we're cusing you.
Yep.
Okay. In which case, I need to leave the building, or is that the...
Leave the room. Yeah. Want to go hang out there with them or something you want, that's fine.
So it's just us and the cats?
The applicants are here.
We have an audience. Are you appearing as Joan tonight, Scott?
I am appearing as Joan tonight, yes.
Do you want to go ahead with our staff report?
Absolutely. So the item you have before this evening is for a conditional use permit and parking exception for one of our expansions of a non-conforming structure, you know, specifically in relationship to a garage that doesn't meet the setback requirement, nor is it large enough to include two spaces within it. Project description, the proposal includes a 362-square-foot, single-story addition at the rear of the home. That addition will include a den and a laundry, and there'll be a roof deck on top of it, but again, single-story addition at the rear. The existing home measures approximately 952 square feet, so when you add the 952 to the 362, you get 13, 14 square feet total when all is done and said. There'll be a new exterior staircase that goes up to the roof deck. Footprint of that's about 52 square feet. And then there'll be a new covered porch that, you know, that you can come out of either laundry room or the den onto a little porch, about 66 square feet. That's also at the rear, really not visible from the street. Proposal, because of the nonconformity, is to include that second parking space in tandem in the driveway. Out of the setback, you've seen similar solutions on other projects moving forward. I mentioned previously that we have the nonconforming garage. It's both nonconforming related to setback. It sits basically right on the rear property line, and about a foot and a half off the right-hand side property line, and then it's only large enough to contain a single-car garage, so it's nonconforming both with regard to setback and the number of cars that it can contain. Development standards for the project, you know, we're not really affecting the front yard setback. The addition will comply with the five-foot side yard setback requirement. You see the items in red. It has a zero-foot setback at the rear for the garage, as I mentioned. Overall height for this will match the height of the existing structure at 15 and 1/2 feet. Lot coverage will increase from 26% to 35%. Again, it has a single-car garage, and we'll be proposing a second parking space in tandem and recognizing that through the parking exception process. That staircase that I mentioned previously does extend into a setback. It can, if it's open and uncovered, extend as close to three feet to the property line. In this instance, it really extends six inches into the setback, so it's conforming with city policy. This is a picture of the front of the residence, and then I think I got another one, too. Yep, got two of them. There's a site plan here, so... Well, is that going to work? Barely. So you see the outline of the addition here, outlined in darker pen, and then you also see the stair that I was talking about that encroaches six inches into the setback, but it's uncovered and is allowed to encroach as close to three feet. There is an existing shed, and here's the garage that I talked about that literally is at zero lot line setback. This is more of a site plan for it. You guys have the plans up there on the dais with you. Here's the little laundry room I was talking about. Here's the den, and then here's the two doors that access the little covered deck patio that was there that I mentioned previously. We have some cross-section drawings. This is looking at it from the south. The addition. Here's the east elevation. There's the stair that I referenced that's on the exterior that goes up to the roof deck. North elevation. Again, now you're looking at the other side of the stair that goes up right there. Here's the addition. These are existing elevations for that shed and the garage under the back, as well as the footprints for both of those. With that, staff is recommending approval of the project and adoption of Resolution 26-17, would approve both the conditional use permit and parking exception for the 362-square-foot addition to the nonconforming residence at 550 Fresno. If you have questions, comments, I'd be happy to answer them.
Jesse, Richard, do you have any questions?
I've got one, Scott. One of the things that this brought to my attention was the idea of our secondary unit issues. They're not proposing anything like that here, but, you know, because of the addition and location of the bathroom associated with the den, in this case. If we had a condition like this, where someone would choose to want to turn that den by addition of a small kitchenette or something into a rentable unit of some kind, does the... do we have any mechanism to take into account the waiver of parking for that unit?
In fact, as of January 1 in 2017, the legislature's kind of removed all ability to deal with that. You can convert a garage into a secondary dwelling unit, and you don't have to replace the parking. Inside of a garage. You'd have to replace it, you know, someplace else on the site, but you don't have to put it back in a garage, so they could come forward and do that. The parking exception doesn't really have any bearing on this. It would be, you know, allowed, you know, basically by right, given current standards. We are, you know, updating our zoning code, you know, to conform to the current requirements for accessory dwelling units, but they've really removed much of the teeth that are in it. If you have an existing accessory structure on your property, example here, again, was the garage, that you could convert it into one without having to do anything with the parking. Lose the parking, it doesn't have to be enclosed, and then it's fine if you would replace it back in the driveway, in a setback, doesn't matter, as long as you have the place to put it.
So, in effect, hypothetically, I'm not seeing it on this at all, but hypothetically, if we grant a parking waiver like this, we, in effect, could be waiving, too. Well, we're not waiving.
Well, it wouldn't waive them.
By right.
Yeah, so we would say, all right, so now instead of having one parking space in the garage, say, I'm going to go back, because I was using that example, we convert the garage. Forget the space they're adding on, we convert the garage. Then you could have two parking spaces in tandem in the driveway, and that's essentially allowed by the changes to the legislation, so California government code. So, yeah, I mean, that's... So I think one of the quotes I remember reading about this when people brought the issue of about parking was, "We don't have a parking crisis, we have a housing crisis." So if that gives you any idea about where the legislature was when it passed the legislation, it was on the side of providing more housing, because we need more housing, and being less concerned about what happens with parking. Maybe down the road, we'll have a parking crisis, too, I don't know. Depends how many of these things we build.
Okay. Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Kind of following up on that. So as I understand what you just said, if I understood what you just said, I'm not sure I do, if they had converted the garage into a accessory dwelling unit, they wouldn't need a conditioning permit? Am I hearing you right?
No, it still would for the second car for the original.
Well, because the one car per dwelling.
So actually, you're correct. If that was what they were here before, they wouldn't be here. They would be, you're allowed to do it by right, it has to be, you know, administratively approved. We have, they still, because we're a coastal city, you have to go through the coastal development permit process to do that, but, yeah, you're right. And it would be compliant.
So, I mean, it kind of seems backwards that we would be making these folks go through a conditional use permit when a more intensive use would be allowed by right. So, I mean, I guess when we do our G-PAC, we do our...
So you have local control over our ordinances and what our policies reflect, and then you have the state mandating what we have to do. That's what happens when those two things collide, you end up with policies that sort of look a little odd, but that's where we live. I mean, that's, the legislature passes, we have to comply with state law, and we will. Other than that, we maintain local control over how many parking spaces we're required to have for single-family homes, and what the setbacks are, and those types of things, and so in some instances, those are going to clash and be a little bit, you know, on opposing sides of things, and that's what would happen here. I think in the zoning code update that we're in the process of, we probably won't be, you probably won't be seeing a whole lot of these things. You kind of see how simple this was. It probably doesn't rise to the level of needing to go to the planning commission all the time. We notice everybody within 500 feet, if everybody has an issue, they can come forward and say, hey, we have an issue, and they can appeal staff's decision. There's not, I mean, I don't know that there needs to be a whole lot of discretionary, you know, process built into this, because this is a fairly simple project, and it really is just because of the nature of the way our current code is written, it comes before the planning commission, but I would think you'd be, you know, better served, you know, seeing more complicated and interesting projects. This is sort of mundane, and they're making an addition that's sort of nice where you'd expect it. It's in scale with the development, it looks like the project, and it's, there's not a whole bunch of issues there.
So in the new...
My opinion.
In the new update, the general plan update, we're going to hopefully iron some of these bugs out.
So, yeah, we're going to, as we go through it, there'll be, we're working on the things that do come to planning commission, putting this more in an administrative process, because it probably belongs there, you know, instead of better defining those types of things that go to planning commission. Our code right now is, I mean, you have to, like, read through several different sections to figure out when you're dealing with nonconforming structures, like, does this go or doesn't it, you know, and then, does it go, is it just a use permit and a parking exception, or is it a use permit, a coastal development permit, and a parking exception? I mean, it's, you have to read all of the sections to figure out which one of those you fall within, and it kind of depends on the amount that you're adding on. It's not easy, it's not simple for people to use, which it should be easier, you know, so we're trying to make it do that, be simpler and easier for people to understand, and a less cumbersome process, so it's faster.
Thank you. Kind of bouncing off both these guys. Now, if, let's say you do the addition and you put a kitchenette in there, yeah, and later on, you want to convert your garage as well, so you end up with, like, three units, is that a possibility?
No, not unless it was in a zone that would allow, it would allow that number of units. Accessory dwelling units are, you know, legislature has said they're no different than a single-family home, and so you can't treat them differently. You can't, you know, you can't go, oh, you have an accessory dwelling unit, and charge full impact fees for a new unit, as an example. You can charge commensurate impact fees with the impact for the addition, no different than adding bedrooms and things like that, so.
Any other questions?
Okay, so does a public hearing or history, is that we have the applicant present first, so would you like to come forward and speak to your project? Tell us your name for the record, please.
I'll do it really quickly. So my name is Donna Daniels, and I live at 550 Fresno Avenue, and I just wanted to let you know that we have run this by most of our neighbors. We think it's really consistent with what's happening in the neighborhood. We spent, we probably went to see Joan half a dozen times over the last year, ran a bunch of things, including separate dwelling units past her, and this is kind of what we lit on, and we also think it's pretty simple and mundane, in that it'll fit with the karma of the house, but we're very glad that you're considering everything. And we have no plans to put a second dwelling unit in there at this point, but, I mean, if someone else ever bought the house, I guess that would be an option. The garage actually is big enough to hold two small cars, even though it's not technically wide enough, it actually, if you cleared everything out of it, which no one does, you could put two small cars in that garage. So we now only use one when we're at the property, so more than enough for us. Anyway, that's it. We hope you see the project as we do, as a positive one for Morro Bay, and that's it. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. You want to have a seat for a moment? Any other public comment? Going, going, gone. So we'll bring it back to the commission. Jesse, you want to start?
I don't have any issues with this. I think this is a pretty straightforward project. It looks great. I hope you guys have a lot of fun with it.
I really like this project. It's really cool. I like a lot of the features, and I think you put it well. The karma of the house is, it's in phase, it's in sync. I like the deck on the top, that would be nice. I did walk around to make sure the privacy, you know, but there's two-story there, and there's another single-story, so, yeah, I really like it. The only thing that I learned from Jerry is when we talk about roof decks, he mentions, like, patio furniture flying around in umbrellas, and maybe...
Our code doesn't deal with that.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, and the height limit here is 25 feet, so, I mean, that doesn't really come into play, really. I mean, if there was some, you know, safety issue or something, like...
Leaving stuff up there, but, I mean, other than that, I remember him, you know, mentioning, but, yeah, I think it's a great project.
I don't think we have too many people appeal to karmic forces in our testimony, but I appreciate that, too. No, I think it's a lovely house. It's, I can't recuse myself, but it's exactly the footprint of my daughter's house in San Diego. It's from 1928. And I looked at it, and I thought, wow, if it was white, and you took about 20 feet off the front and rear yard, that would be my daughter's house. And I really like how simple the plan is, and I think it's a really well-laid-out design, and I think from everything I've seen, it looks like it fits in really well, and I agree about, you know, the roof deck. The only thing I'll say, little sidebar, I have a glass-top table, and in one of our wind events last year, the glass top was pulled out of the table and taken about 15 feet into my side yard and disposed.
Wow.
So the wind has the capacity to do suction sometimes in unbelievable ways, but that would only be if you had a bad karma addition. I think this is exceptional. So I don't have any further comment. I think traditionally, the chair does not move any motion as a first, so I'll look to...
Thing? Real quick, I didn't notice, and I know there was a lot of probably standard language for backwater valves and things like that, but I didn't notice on the, in the standard language, and I don't know if it's something we can address, but downward-facing lights, so, I mean, whatever lighting you do place up there, obviously would have to comply with the green code and those things, so, I mean, just throwing it out there, so.
Anything else? Do we have a motion?
I'll move to approve this project. I'll second it.
This is a technically strong enough there. We have language in the staff report that if you...
Oh.
I think it's, do you know where that is in there, Scott?
Well, I was going to say, you know, this is really, you could mostly just read that.
I move to adopt Planning Commission Resolution 26-17, which includes the findings and conditions of approval for permit UPO 496/AD0124 for the 362-square-foot addition to a nonconforming residence and parking exception at 550 Fresno.
Nice.
I'll second that.
So it's been moved and seconded. Scott, do you want to call the roll?
Yeah. Commissioner Barone?
Aye.
Commissioner Shadowski?
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas?
Aye.
Passes 302.
We'll have to see if Commissioner Lore is still in the house or somewhere. Jerry? Are you here?
Should send the cats for him.
This is when we should have the cameras on the cats for a few moments till we...
Yeah, where did they go?
Locate our commissioners.
Are they out there? I got the other cat in there. They're like, we're out of here, we're going home.[1501.82][1501.82](laughing). Yeah.
Good luck. Got some great multi-camera cuts going on here of the return of the commissioners. Good edited action shots here. Okay. You guys ready? Okay. Okay, now, we move on to new business, and I see none. Unfinished business, I see none. So at this point, Planning Commissioner comments? Joseph? Jesse?
Not today.
Richard? Michael?
I just want to say thanks to the staff for the recognition dinner, for those on the committees in the city yesterday, and what a spectacular boat parade week we've had, and great weather, and it's good to see the tall ships in and see the one coming back to harbor in the sunset. Spectacular.
I think that's why we live here. So, yeah, and thanks to the city and the staff for putting on that dinner last night, and I think a good time was had by all. So, Scott, do you have...
Sorry. We will have, we should have a couple of items for that meeting on the 19th, so, I think we have at least one right now scheduled, so we should be good to go on that one. Got a delay on getting some of our plans back from some of our applicants, and so it's a little questionable whether we were going to make it or not, so.
What's the over and under on the January 2nd?
I mean, when I polled you guys, you said you were going to be here, so I wasn't going to cancel it. If you're telling me that you might not be here, that would be good information to know now, because I don't have anything, I don't have anything scheduled right now on it, so if we're not going to have a quorum, that's fine, just let me know.
Well, what does that do to staff to try to get a meeting together for the 2nd, seeing as you have the vacation, you know, on the 1st?
It goes out the week before, so, I mean, it doesn't, it's no big deal to us. It's just, it's whether you're going to be there, like I said, we don't have anything scheduled for that meeting right now. I mean, there's stuff that's probably going to line up that could be put on it, but if there's going to be an issue with a quorum or what have you, then I don't want to schedule if that's going to be the case. I mean, I'd rather just cancel it now, so everybody's aware, and so when we're talking to our applicants, they're like, hey, can I go on the 2nd? I'm like, nope, going to have to wait for the 2nd one. So it's not a huge...
I'd rather keep them on schedule if we don't, I don't want to hold anybody up. If we're needed, I'd like to be there.
Are you going to be here, Joseph?
Yes.
Michael? Okay. Well, it looks like we can have a quorum.
All right.
I don't know how effective it will be, but we'll give it a shot.
Yeah.
Okay, so was there any other comments, you know, before we adjourn, or? Okay. So at this point, we'll adjourn to the next regularly scheduled Planning Commission meeting at the Veterans Memorial Building at 209 Surf Street on December 19, 2017, at 6:00 PM. Thank you very much.